Well, welcome to the Public Safety and Veterans Subcommittee Meeting. I like to call this meeting to order. The first item is the approval of the minutes.
Move approval. Second?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, all those opposed? The motion passes. We have called to the public, we have one card. DeeDee?
She had to leave.
All right. All righty, so she wanted to make sure that the, what is it? The Sister Cities Awards. All right, that she just wanted to make sure that her comment card was on the record. All righty, with that, we have no other calls?
I'm going to give you a card, Michael.
All righty.
For public.
I say we let her speak and finish the card later.
I agree. I think she sits at the table. Come on down.
Good morning again.
Good morning.
Can I give us your name for the record, ma'am?
You're right, just public on there. Rest of the stuff doesn't matter. How do you turn this?
That little button in the middle?
Little button in the middle?
There you go.
I'm still using kerosene lamps.
Where you can get the kerosene.
I'm here because, I haven't even looked at the agenda, so whether there's anything on there that is of interest to me, I don't know. But I'm here because, and this won't change anything, the transportation proposal on the ballot in August for a council primary is absolutely unseemly. It's atrocious. This city can no more afford $32 billion than I can afford a Bentley. The difference is, I know I can't afford a Bentley, and I don't need one. My Malibu gets me to and from just fine, as long as I don't trip over chairs. And putting this on a council primary ballot is political chicanery at its worst. And putting police and fire on the same ballot is abominable. They do not cart people. They provide public safety for all of us. I hope the citizens of this city are wise enough to defeat this, and we will bring police and fire and streets back and 16 on a general election ballot where they belong, and at the appropriate amounts for them to succeed in their missions, and it will pass. And I don't want any more political chicanery by this city. You have put yourselves right down on the bottom rung with Chicago. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other cards? Then we're going to the next items, which is item four through 10. They are consent items, there's no presentations or plan, but however staff's here to answer any questions. Oh, we have one more card from the public, is it?
And I do have a question on the block watch, so if we could do consent as five through 10.
Okay.
I'd move approval of five through 10.
Hold on for just a second, let me see what this card's for. Item number seven.
Except seven.
All righty. Oh, there is another card.
Second?
All righty, so we have items five, six, eight, nine, and 10. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes. Now we're on item number four.
Wonderful. So item number four is Block Watch Grant Program Awards. And we had some individuals who have a block watch in District Eight who are interested in pursuing funding. One of the problems they perceive in their neighborhood is wild dogs, and so they had some signs that were disallowed, so we just wanted to get feedback for them on what is allowable under block watch to address that problem, because they are not, I'm afraid, the only neighborhood in District Eight where that is a problem.
Mr. Chairman, Councilwoman Gago, Stacey Osborne-Fry is here, she can answer that.
The application that was looking at the loose dog signs was the Val Rue Block Watch, correct? Yes. And they did score a 7.89. Their requested amount was $3,178. They were awarded $2,710, and the only thing that was denied was the $468 for the loose dog signs. That is a line item veto from the Oversight Committee. So that's really the only information that I would have on, that's how they voted.
So they can, is there's not a guidance that said those signs are?
It was, it's not a prohibited item.
Okay.
It was just a line item veto.
Because, and, well, could you give me examples of items that could help address loose dogs that were passed by them?
I believe in their application, they stated that it would bring attention to the neighborhood by posting those signs. I would be more than happy to take your questions back to the Oversight Committee and have them address them, since staff is merely an administrative body only.
That would be fabulous.
Okay.
And it would just be good to know success stories from other block watches, because...
With signs, or?
With addressing loose dogs.
Loose dogs, okay.
We do have.
Is there an appeals process with the Oversight Committee?
It's a six-week appeal process, and they did not appeal this line item veto.
Okay, good to know. So they still have time to appeal it, right?
It's already done, the six-week process. Yeah, you're actually voting on the approved applications today to be forwarded to council.
Okay, thank you.
How are they made aware of the appeal?
When we send out the notifications on whether they were awarded, either fully, partially, or denied entirely, the appeal process is stated in those letters of exactly when it starts and how to do it.
Okay. And my understanding is the block watch oversight met last week, and it was, we've had a great discussion regarding dusk-to-dawn lights, and my understanding is that they voted no for not wanting to change the formula, but did not allow city staff in this conversation to understand why that keeps coming back up, that item, and...
Your concerns actually were brought up during the meeting, and the suggestion from the chair was a motion to increase the amount to a $3,000 flat rate and take away the percentage.
Okay.
And the committee voted against it.
Okay. All right. So, okay, so then, I guess we'll just see what happens with the crime rates in those areas, and then we keep bringing it back up. So if you could provide me from, I'll provide the neighborhoods that have the program and that will no longer have the program, so that we can start looking at what's activity is going to start. So, that'll be great. Thank you.
Any other questions on the Neighborhood Block Watch Grant Award?
Were there any neighborhoods that did use the program successfully on dog issues in public safety?
This year, I don't know. As far as the applications, I'll be more than happy to go back and look at previous years and see if there has ever been that issue brought up.
Wonderful, because I think people look to us to know success stories from elsewhere in the city, and if block watches have come up with innovative solutions, it is a problem in several neighborhoods, and so I would love to help them.
Absolutely. I'd be happy to look into it.
This is something, we've been meeting with county animal control and others to try to address that as we become a more pedestrian-friendly city, and people are walking around, and particularly certain breeds, certain large breeds are intimidating to some residents. Thank you, that's all my questions.
All righty, any other questions? Entertain a motion?
Move approval.
All right, we have a motion to approve item number four. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes. We're on item number seven, there's actually two cards. Not sure if there's any comments from my colleagues.
Let's hear the cards first, but I would be interested in knowing what the Police Department will be focused on.
All right, we have Chanel. Come on down.
Good morning, Chairman Norakowski, members of the committee. I just want to say that this is a great, a great step in the right direction from the Phoenix Police Department. Chief, your honor, really pleased to see that our police department is applying for these COPS grants to improve the police and community relationships. Just have a quick question. Are we following the 21st Century of Community Policing model that was just released in May 2015 from the White House, the 116-page document?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Subcommittee, yes, we are. We've all reviewed that document. Mike Curtinbach can provide some further information, but yes, that was a well-written document. In fact, we just had a discussion with major city chiefs, we're in town last week, and that was one of the items on the agenda. So, yes, we are.
That's excellent. And I just want to make a point of reference to the bullet point of the open data to build transparency and increase community trust. I know that we were looking for various systems to kind of have all of our data and storage tracked, and I know currently the City of Phoenix uses an in-house system. I just wanted to take a look at bullet point number three, where the Code of America of CI Technologies, they work together to build the open-source software, which is a tool to help more than 500 U.S. law enforcement agencies using the IA Pro Police Integrity software to extract and open up data. And that's another great way for us to increase transparency by having that data open and available to the public. Thank you.
And is there a response to that, maybe?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Subcommittee, we use IA Pro. We're well aware of that.
Thank you. Then we have one other card. Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Councilman Norakowski and Subcommittee. I don't know much about this COPS grant and things of that nature, and what it all involved, but I just think that if any time that we're going to involve the community, we'd not only look at the Police Department, but other resources that are available to build the relationship between, just build community policing.
Right.
But I don't think community policing is just, should be just something left to the Police Department. I think there, crime involves poverty. Poverty and crime are hand in hand, and we need to address poverty as well as address the relationship between the Police Department and the community. And so I think that in applying for these grants, and not only this one, but the others that we're applying for, that we look at the other ways, block watches or community organizations that can help in improving the relation, just improving safety in the community. That should be our objective, not so much whether it's the police or anybody else, just get it safer. That's my view.
Thank you so much.
I think there was some good news on that in the block watch applications. There were several block watches that had youth programming and other related anti-poverty measures, so I think there are good news in that area.
Any other comments? Absolutely.
Councilwoman Pastor and I had the opportunity to visit the Department of Justice COPS program when we were in DC, and they talked about our great success with this program, and that they've taken some of the lessons learned in Phoenix and shared them with other departments, so congratulations to you on that. And they did talk about the six areas we could focus on with one of the grants listed here. What one of the six areas, where do we hope to focus?
Mr. Chairman, Councilwoman Kate Gago, Mike Curtinbach will talk about that. The one grant, the COPS hiring grant, it's important to realize it's for 25 officer positions, so it's very limited in those 25 officers, and we're going to focus on community outreach, and I'll have Mike Curtinbach explain.
So, Mr. Chairman, Councilwoman Gago, members of the committee, specific to the COPS hiring grant, and it ties into the Task Force Report on 21st Century Policing, there were four categories within that grant alone. One of the specific categories was titled Building Trust. When you consider the recommendations in the Task Force and how there's a tremendous opportunity for us to enhance our Community Relations Bureau, that's our focus area as it relates to that grant. I believe we were specifically referencing one of the other grants that has six different categories within it. We are going to submit an application for funding for our best squad, so they can continue to go out there in what's referred to as the shadow economy and conduct some additional enforcement, which directly impacts the revenues for the city as it relates to tax revenues. But that's one of three categories, as it relates to the COPS hiring grant, it's all about building trust and increasing capacity of law enforcement as it relates to community policing.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
Any other comments? Just a comment for myself is, last week, we had a meeting at the Desert Sky Community Center where the chief came out, and basically, Chief, I want to thank you for meeting with the community, going one-on-one, and coffee with the cops. I mean, it's really building up that community trust and meeting with those community leaders and everything that we just talked about. I mean, we're already practicing that, and we're just taking it to the next level, so thank you for that leadership that you and your Assistant Chief has shown out there in the community.
Thank you.
At that time, I'll entertain a motion?
Move approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion passes. We're on item number 11, Operation Safe Summer.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Subcommittee, every year, we do an operation in the summertime to address violent crime, as well as underage drinking and curfew violations, and this year, just like years past, we're going to do that again. It used to be Safe Streets, now it's called Operation Safe Summer. With me today is Commander AB Smith. The program this year is going to be run out of the Violent Crimes Bureau under Commander Smith's supervision, and then also Assistant Chief Mary Roberts is here. So I'll turn it over to AB to talk about the specifics of the program.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Subcommittee. This is our, over our 20th year of doing Safe Streets, back when I was in gangs, in the early 90s, we did it. And so what we're going to do this year is just kind of build upon the successes and the model that we've used in the past. One of the things that we've done in the past years is the education component used in the Community Relations Bureau, the school resource officers in particular. They go out to the malls, to the places where kids congregate in the daytime, and educate them on liquor, curfew, the dangers of the parties, those kind of things. In addition to that, at the schools, they're working the GREAT program, the Gang Resistance Education and Training, and the Wake Up Program, to give the kids something to do. So, that's more, that's the education component. The enforcement component is between gangs and targeted enforcement squad that used to be in Mary, or they are assigned in Maryville, but they go citywide. And that squad focuses on parties, underage drinking, driving, and curfew. So we're going to work hand-in-hand with them, with the gang unit, to go citywide, and what we're doing is focusing on, with our Crime Analysis and Research Unit, hotspots within the entire city. So we'll go weekly on, focus on different areas. That doesn't mean we're going to stay there. If something pops up during the shift, we're going to respond. So that's, that's what we're planning on, that's what we've done in the past, again, curfew, liquor, the stuff that keeps kids out of trouble. But on the other part of it, is focusing on violent crime, arresting the violent offenders so we have fewer victims. That's, that's the goal of the program through the summer, which runs from June 3rd through August 1st. So, any questions?
Any questions for my colleague? I have a question, is, do you collaborate with our parks and other departments within the city? Thinking about, we have our water safety campaigns out there, we're educating people about water safety, but at the same time, there's a large audience of young people at our swimming pools, getting free swimming classes. What a great opportunity to train them about Safe Summer programs and stuff like that.
Yes, Chairman, members of the committee, the educational component is formal and informal. So they're going to seek out the summer camps, Parks and Rec, the YMCA, all the activities where we have a captured audience, and we're going to be able to do those formal presentations, but also, these officers are going to mingle. They're going to sit at the lunch table, the breakfast table, and talk to the kids. So we're going to hit it in every park.
Perfect. Anything else? So this is basically just for information and discussion only, so thank you so much for, oh, we do have a card, I'm sorry, Mr. Gray, come on up.
Thank you, Councilman Norakowski and Subcommittee. My comment on this part, the Safe Summer program, and I want to, you know, thank the Police Department last night on West Side near my home. We had a carjacking, couple hours later, we had a shooting with a homicide, and I was watching TV, I had just bought gas where the carjacking occurred, and I was driving home unaware of all this stuff, and heard the shots, but you know, that's common in West Phoenix. By the time I got home and turned on the TV, because I saw the TV reporter at the car, the gas station, the shooting had occurred, and the police responded, you know, there were sirens going every direction toward the thing. So I think, you know, realizing this was a shooting, we had officers going full blast toward that shooting. So I commend the Police Department for that. And I, and I think this program that they have for this summer is good, but I think it's important, again, crime and poverty go together. I know Councilwoman Pastor has, has put out some information about summer youth program, summer employment program, those kinds, we have, and as Councilman Norakowski said, we have parks programs, we have PACs and things of that nature. So those, those are important also. And, and I think that next summer, I hope next summer, or if not, something can be done this summer, it'd be more important, to expand these programs and to provide opportunities for more children, more youth, to be involved in productive and healthy activities. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Pastor?
Well, it goes back to the, and it's kind of off-subject, but it goes back to the workforce, the youth workforce piece, and so if anybody is listening, I am, I need 20 employers that are willing to take 20 students to work in their company or in their business, it will be paid for, and so if you know of any employers willing, or within the city, of willing to take on these youth, please let me know, so that we can get these jobs filled. So, that's my plug.
All right, sounds great. Well, thank you, Chief, thank you all for coming down and explaining the program to us. Then we're on item number 12, the monsoon readiness program. How you doing, Chief?
Good morning, Chairman Norakowski, Subcommittee members. I'm Danny Seville, Deputy Chief with the Phoenix Fire Department, and it's my pleasure to present to you this morning on behalf of Emergency Manager Kevin Cockburner, who is, I'm delegated for this week. Kevin is in San Antonio at the UAWC Homeland Security Conference, representing the City of Phoenix and the needs of our, of our community there, so thank you for allowing me to speak today about monsoon preparedness for 2015. As we know, the official monsoon season starts next week, it is June 15th now through September 30th. I know those native Arizonans, we always talked about, when the humidity got high, that's when monsoon came, but we have an official season now too, so that's what we're prepared for. And I'm very pleased to, to speak to you today about what we have learned over the last years, but especially monsoon 2014, where we had some epic rainfall and some, some storms that really caused us and had us look at our preparedness and our response recovery aspect a little bit different too, so I'll, I'll talk about that today. Preparation. Councilwoman Pastor, I know you're an educator, and preparation, education and training is very huge, and I think the City of Phoenix is very well-prepared. We've learned a lot of good lessons from what we learned last year. Preparation for us comes in the form of training, comes in the form of education, and not only for City of Phoenix Department members and our department heads and those people are, it's not only public safety, but it's also city departments. What we saw last year was many city departments coming together, Parks and Recreation, our streets transportation, Public Works. We all leveraged our resources, our training, our experience, and our, and our, and our will to go out there and mitigate these emergencies that we saw last year. When we talk about preparation as well, we talk about our UAWC, City of Phoenix Incident Management Team. Anytime we have a planned or unplanned event in the City of Phoenix, our Emergency Manager, Kevin Cockburner, will work with city leadership, along with, along with our City Councilman Mayor, to initiate the Incident Management Team. The Incident Management Team is, is a team of public safety members too, but we also reach out to our city departments. These are the same Incident Management Team members that manage Super Bowl events, and, and as we've seen here in the City of Phoenix, we've had large-scale demonstrations, protests. We come together, and we work within the National Incident Management System, which is a system that was instituted back after September 11th attacks, and it enables agencies, organizations, and, and public safety responders to, to prepare for these type of events and, and respond and recover from those events too. So anytime we have any type of event, whether it be planned or unplanned, the UAWC Incident Management Team will respond, and we will, we will prepare our, our response to these type of incidents. So on May 14th, 2015, the Office of Homeland Security Emergency Management, along with the City, City of Phoenix, we brought together approximately 100 participants to attending the event. It was held at the Phoenix Fire Department Training Academy at our Emergency Operations Center, and those that attended were City Phoenix Departments. I mentioned some of them before too, but I also want to mention too, these events, they view, they involve humans. This is a human element too, where, where we have a storm that occurs, and it, and it impacts somebody's livelihoods, impacts their belongings, their home. So not only do we talk about Parks and Recreation and streets, keeping the streets open and making sure that we're providing for public safety, but we're also talking about the human elements. We bring together people from Neighborhood Services, those representatives from there, human service too, and, and that also is headed up by the Phoenix Incident Management Team. Like I said, these, this is the team that manages the large-scale events too, but they do have emergency response experience too as well. Many of the Incident Management Team members responded to Superstorm Sandy. They responded to Yarnell and Prescott to help the City of Prescott recover from that tragic loss of the 19 firefighters there too. So they have experience, not only with planned sterile events, but we have, they have experience when it comes to these other, other non-planned events. Coordination, cooperation with the National Weather Service, we know we can never predict the weather. If we look at the news, and we never know what's going to happen the next day too, but if we have enough foresight and enough knowledge from the National Weather Service too, we can get our city department heads and those representatives prepared, and say, hey, you know what, if this is, if we're anticipating a bad rainstorm, or we're looking at the remnants of Hurricane Blanca, whatever that is, we can at least get that information out there, get prepared. And in the public safety world, we call it situational awareness, and situational awareness is just having, having your head on a swivel and being aware of what's going to be coming when it comes to weather standpoint. We could not do this without our private sector partners, Arizona Public Service, Salt River Project. They were instrumental last year in helping us to recover from those storms last year too, and they're also preparing for 2015, so we can stay ahead of the curve should we have another incident occur. The charitable organizations, the non-government organizations are very, mean very much to us, American Red Cross, and you'll see a slide after this too, that talks about the many community partners and stakeholders that came together in 2014, and we will once again build those relationships and strengthen that if we were to have something happen in 2015 as well. Volunteer groups, the Phoenix Community Emergency Response Team, a CERT, it's called the CERT Team. These are volunteers. These, these, and I know many of you, especially you, Councilwoman Gago, you were at Fire Station 57 last, last year, and you saw our CERT members, our CERT volunteers, shoveling sand into sandbags, and, and they help us with coordination centers of the recovery, recovery centers that we stood up for the citizens, especially of District Eight, but also too on the northern aspect of the City of Phoenix too. We, we had our volunteers out there too, so they're a huge vital part of our entire preparation, response, and recovery aspect of these, of these type of incidents. And I'll go to the next slide, so we'll talk about some of the other volunteer nonprofit organizations. So these are the people that we brought together last year. Like I said, we have some faith-based organizations, we have some, you see the, some of the big hitters there, Salvation Army, those are the people that we always rely upon, and, and not only do they bring their, their workforce, they bring their knowledge, they bring their experience too, because we understand that these types of organizations, they're nationwide, and they see large-scale events, and we're talking about hurricanes or earthquakes too, and they can bring their experience, their knowledge, and assist the City of Phoenix and our departments here, so we can have a better response and recovery. So the Phoenix Emergency Operations Center, this is, this is the hub of where everything happens. Last year, we saw with monsoon 2014, we brought together the Phoenix Incident Management Team, along with our city leadership, as well as our community stakeholders. That's what we brought together with the help of, as you can see from the screen, our technology that keeps us aware of what's going on. We can tap into the Maricopa County Flood Control District, we can keep our awareness when it comes to watching the news, news feeds to the media outlets. That enables us to be able to respond appropriately and to, and to, and plan for the next period too, should the event happen over two or three days or, or longer too. So this is what the Emergency Managers Office will, will manage on behalf of the city management, and this is what we bring together, and we come up with a long-term response and planning So, what do we move forward from here? Monsoon Preparedness Day, as I talked about, on May 14th, we, we are only as good as our, as our last response to these type of incidents. So weather awareness, like I said, we can never, you could throw a dart, you can never predict what the weather's going to be too, but the more awareness and the more education we have when it comes to... to weather, it'll only make us better when we respond to these types of incidents. Notification, communications is huge anytime we talk about any type of emergency event. The ability for the Incident Management Team and the Office of Homeland Security Emergency Management to tap into the city departments and notify those decision-makers and those representatives that we need to gather, that we do have an impending storm, or we did have a storm event, and gather those people together in one location, which would be the Phoenix EOC, and for us to start with our plans too. So notification is ongoing. We have a notification phone tree that is currently in place through Emergency Management Office too. But we're always looking for technology, better ways for us to improve that too, because we never want to have the phones go down and not be able to notify those people too. So we're looking at better technology for us to notify those department heads and representatives as well. Response plans, we talk about plan and preparedness. So what we're asking the city departments to, from the Streets Transportation Department, if we have this type of event, what would be your response plan? Not only to maintain the everyday service that we have to provide to our 500-plus square miles and residents within the city of Phoenix, but how can we maintain that continuity of government, but as well, how can we mitigate this emergency at the same time too? So we need to build in a robust plan for every department too, then also too, from the entire city as a standpoint as well. Table talk response operations, training and exercise is huge to be able to be successful in these outcomes. We can only be as successful as we train and exercise. You talk to those members in the public safety world, if you're not training, if you're not exercising, then when that incident occurs, you could be rusty. So we want to make sure that we're on top of our training, on top of our exercise too. But it's also bringing in the city departments, it's also bringing in the non-governmental organizations that we talked about too, so they could understand what our response is going to be and what our resources are, and then we could start to leverage that back and forth so we can prepare for a better outcome. I spoke a little bit about the notification system. It is a notification system that is managed out of the Office of Homeland Security Emergency Management. This provides for connectivity and collaboration with the city departments. This enables us and the office to gather together, those folks together, like I said, in one hub, one location, for us to respond to these types of incidents. And we're always constantly looking for technology and better ways, and keeping that list updated to make sure that we have the right person in the right chair to be able to solve these And just once again, it talks about primary contacts and secondary contacts too, for department heads as well. That will plan to be completed by the end of July 15. Like I said, there is a current system in place, but we'll continue to modify that and revise that too. And I'm happy to take any questions. One thing that I will also say too, that we had the Recovery Information Centers last year, and I spoke yesterday with a member from KTA, and he wanted to know, how are we for 2015? And I told him, I said, the one thing, I said, you can have the best plans, you can have the best equipment, best training, but it comes down to people. And I feel very confident that the employees of the city of Phoenix, that they care about the residents. We saw them come together, especially at the Recovery Information Centers last year, and they wanted to solve problems, whether it was connecting them with other stakeholders, the Maricopa County Flood District, whether it be the Arizona State Department of Emergency Management, Salvation Army, Red Cross, they are City of Phoenix employees. They created a synergy in those Recovery Information Centers too, and they wanted to solve problems for our residents too. So, last thing I wanted to mention is on June 16th, which is the day after the start of the monsoon season, we will have a media event, the city of Phoenix will have a media event, but it's an education platform for our residents. We will have members of various departments, from Police Department, Fire, Streets Transportation, and we'll be able to educate our citizens as far as how they can prepare and be more resilient. Anytime we talk about any one of these events, we talk about a whole community response, and that includes the responsibility of a citizen to be prepared. Do you have a 72-hour plan? Do you have enough food, water? Do you have an evacuation plan? If you take medications, do you have enough medications to sustain you should you have to evacuate from your home? So we'll have that information available on that day, on the media event on June 16th. We'll also have various representatives there. So to show our residents that, yeah, you may see a Parks and Recreation employee trimming the trees in your local park, but you may see also that employee at 2:00 in the morning clearing trees from the street so that our public safety partners can get in there and mitigate these emergencies too. So I am open for any questions.
Any questions for my colleagues? Councilman Gago?
Thank you. Thank you for this preparation. It was a tough monsoon season, but I think we took a lot of the lessons and have good infrastructure in place, although you never know what can happen. One of the things that I learned about last year was, especially for people who use cellphones instead of landlines, was the reverse 911 system. So I think it'd be fabulous if we could promote that next week, and if you could say a little bit about that system as well?
I will make sure that is something we mentioned there with the media event, but the reverse 911 system that is managed out of the Maricopa County Regional System, 911 system too. And what that enables us to do is that if there is an event in a certain location, we can work with our alarm room, our Phoenix Fire Dispatch Center too, and also with the Phoenix Police Radio Dispatch, and we can call those constituents. We can call those residents and say, hey, if we're just talking about a storm event, we can tell them to shelter in place, we can tell them what the boundaries are of that area too. But we also use it on an everyday basis if we need to. If there's a chlorine leak, if there's a chlorine or a chemical leak, and we have to advise those residents to shelter in place or to evacuate, we can institute the reverse 911 system too. And that is a system that is very helpful to us to spread information and get the word out too. So I'll make sure that we pass it along to the Emergency Management Office so we can market that as well too.
Wonderful. And then we've been working hard since last year to make sure we have more real-time information. So in partnership with County Flood Control, this council approved more alert beacons so that if water levels are rising, we will get that information without having to send someone out to check. And so I know Streets Department gets that, but does the Fire Department get that information?
The way that we tap into that information would be through the Phoenix Emergency Operations Center too. So as you saw on the screen too, we have the technology to be able to tap into that too. And that's something we do for every event, whether it be planned or non-planned, we reach out to those organizations to have a decision-maker from that department or from that agency within the room with us, so we can get real-time information from them. Having a liaison there, so you can sit across from the table from them and get that information timely is very critical too. So that is a capability we have too as well.
Wonderful, because I think this is one area where so many different departments have the key information during a monsoon, and it's key that everyone else get the information.
Yes, information sharing is huge.
Wonderful. And then while we are in transition on Deputy City Manager, who is overseeing the infrastructure side and emergency response that Rick Namark until Friday is overseeing? I know that's probably a better question for our Assistant City Manager, but the time is right in the middle of the beginning of monsoon, so.
Mr. Chairman, Councilwoman Gago, the City Manager plans on making that announcement probably by the end of tomorrow.
Wonderful.
Give us some hints.
Coming live from Channel 11.
But we have continuity.
Oh, yes.
Great, thank you.
This person who is going to be named is very much aware of this whole process?
Yes.
Okay. This will be...
Is this person female or man?
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Do we have a number for emergencies?
Anytime, Councilwoman Williams, anytime we, any resident has any type of emergency, we encourage them to use the 911 system. That is a 24-hour, 7 respuestas they can get, and we will go ahead and send out our response units to be able to mitigate that emergency. If they're talking about information, if you're talking about information or awareness for a resident too, I know last year when we had the Recovery Information Centers, we had a standing number too that was staffed by city staffers. So a resident can call in if they have questions about flood insurance, if they had questions about the closest shelter, a number for Red Cross, they can get that admission from there too, but...
From 911?
No, not from 911. What we did through the Office of Emergency Homeland Security and Emergency Management was that we posted a number on phoenix.gov. So I'll make sure that we take that back, take back your recommendation, your question back to Kevin Cockburner, the Emergency Manager, that we have that available too, and we'll also too, make sure that we get that out on the media day on June 16th as well.
Because I think that's important, that we have another number besides 911. 911 is so busy now, but when it comes to the flooding and the other issues, the trees down, electric lines down, whatever, I think it's very important to have a number, because you can spend an hour trying to get through to APS to tell them the line's down in front of your house. But if we had that number posted and we publicized it, well, it should expedite the process.
That should. And once again, if it is a life-threatening emergency, we encourage any resident to be able to call 911. If they're looking for information, or if they're, hey, when is the road going to open up, then we can post that other non-emergency line too, and I'll make sure that we work with Kevin Cockburner's office to get that out to the public. Yes?
It just triggered me, because if the lights are out and we have no electricity, how do we get the number? I think we need to start moving that number now, only because we don't know what's going to happen if no electricity's there. How am I going to get to wherever? Hopefully, somebody will...
We will make sure that is part of the preparedness.
Just get it out now, so that wherever we get to, we know where to go, I mean, to call.
Absolutely. I'll make sure that I work with Kevin's office to make sure we make that part of the preparedness and education on the front end too. So when the lights do go out, people know where to reach.
And we have a card from the public, Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Councilman Noakowski, in the Subcommittee. I've suggested in the past, I think it's appropriate at this time, that also to remind the council, and I know budgetary issues are tight, and you still have next year to deal with, but I think it's a great idea to, that the city have a communication, on radio, particularly radio, have regular announcements from Fire and Police and other departments within the city government on a regular basis throughout the year, as things are appropriate and timely. And it's a cost, but you know, we spent a lot of money over years on that customer service improvement survey, which I thought was very minimal use. And I really think that it would be good to do that. Also, I think that the police precincts and their newsletters, or their communication with the block watches and things of that nature, and whatever the Fire Department does that corresponds to that, that they can put out timely reports periodically. I think, for example, in Maryvale, it'd be nice to have a little follow-up they could on what happened last night, or what, you know, about the Save Summer Program, or anything, things timely throughout the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from my colleagues? Well, Chief, I just really want to thank you, and if any of my colleagues have a chance to take a tour of the Phoenix Emergency Operations Center, it's a great facility. I know that anytime we have a protest or any type of emergency, Milton's always there representing all the different departments, and he keeps us updated on what's going on. So I want to thank Milton for his leadership in making this, keeping us informed so we can keep our residents informed also. The other big thing is, Councilmember Pastor talked about, is once the electricity goes down, we have all these press conferences, nobody can actually listen or watch us. So it's really important for us to prepare ourselves. And actually, one of the things I learned is that you should have a battery-operated radio, so you can actually get information through that. Also, when the weather's good enough to walk, you can, or drive to a police station or a fire station to get help. There's always information there. So it's important to educate ourselves about this. So if you're available on that June, is it June 15th or 16th?
June 16th at the Phoenix Fire Department Training Academy.
It's really important for people to be prepared. You never know. It can happen in downtown Phoenix, it can happen in South Phoenix, North Phoenix, we never know where these monsoons are going to hit, so we really need to prepare ourselves. Is there a website where people can actually go to, or...
They're in the final stages this morning, as a matter of fact, to finalize that media event too. So I'll get with the Communications folks and our Public Information Officer to make sure that we have that website available. But I would suspect it would just on the be the phoenix.gov website.
And just once again, I want to really thank the police, fire, and all the different departments of the city of Phoenix coming together. I really call it the Team Phoenix approach, where we come together, work together to get that information out there. So thank you, and thanks for all the efforts that you're making to educate people about the monsoons.
Can I ask one quick question?
Uh-oh. One more question.
One more question, sorry. Do you work closely with PD on the computer program you have that goes out to all the neighborhoods?
Nextdoor.
Nextdoor. And feed the information on how to be prepared and the number for emergencies?
You're talking about Nextdoor, the social media side?
Yeah. And put that out, all that information out, and then next week or two?
Within the Phoenix Fire Department and representing the Office of Homeland Security Emergency Management for Kevin today. I know the Phoenix Fire Department is very engaged on the social media outlets. I'm not sure, I'll bring that back to Deputy Chief Shelley Jamison, who's our Public Affairs Deputy Chief in that section too, to see if Nextdoor is part of our education outreach too, so.
He's shaking her head, yes, so I hope so.
For those people who are watching online.
Shelley's behind me.
She is on top of it.
Shelley's behind me, so yes.
Yeah, very good, thank you.
Well, thank you. Once again, I just want to recognize my colleague Kate Gago for her leadership in the last monsoon season, and trying to get some of those federal funds for us, and being prepared for this monsoon, and hopefully we don't end up having the same type of weather as we did last year, but we're prepared for it. Thank you. All righty, we're on item number 13, Public Safety Budget Update.
Congratulations to our new Chief Presiding Judge.
I am still smiling, thank you. I'm still a little bit in shock, but a little nervous today than I was last night. Thank you. The questions might be harder tonight, I mean, today. Watch out.
Good morning. I'm going to go over the police department's budget through the end of April. Our budget is $555 million. And for the month of April, we spent $45 million, which is about 3% more than what we had spent the same time last year, but our bottom line is still 1% under from what we spent last Our top 10 expenditures are pretty much still the same. Most of them are under the Personal Services with salaries at 40.81%, and then other type of services, such as our jail services, is at 1.34%, and then our Equipment Management is at 1.13%. And then our revenues, we still have court awards and our SRO program and special events, all of our different IGAs and task force, as you can see, we have, that has increased quite a bit from last year, and it's due to a lot of the grants that we're applying for and the different task force that we're collaborating with other agencies, false alarms, vehicle impound, and then grants, as you can see, is also pretty high compared to last year, and then our pawn shop.
Any questions on our police departments? Councilmember?
Could you speak on the jail services line item, some of the revenues that cover that? Could you speak more about the jail services line item?
On how we spend it?
And where the money comes from?
The money comes from the general fund. It's just, we just allocated it based on our prior-year actuals, and then based on our bookings, what we think we're going to project for the year. We work really close with Budget and Research on developing that budget on annual basis.
Wonderful. We have been having a conversation about some of the people who are jailed because of non-payment of fees, so I think it's important.
Yeah, and then also, it's a little less than what we had last year, and some of that's due to, we're catching up on a couple of bills, but we'll have 12 months of actuals in there before the end of the fiscal year.
That is one of the great mysteries when we do these budgets, of when will be billed for jails? I'm glad some other people understand it, but every month it seems they have a new policy or the bills come at different times, so.
Okay.
All righty, can you kind of explain to us the sickly payout?
The sickly payout is, was an agreement during the negotiation process, and that is for the sworn personnel only. And they get to choose, based on how many vacation hours or sick hours they have on the books, they could cash out some of their vacation and sick time twice a year.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. And we're at Fire.
And we're at Fire.
Thank you. Chairman Noakowski and members of the committee, I'll present on the Fire Department's budget. So our budget is $300,482,303, and it's 78% spent, but we're at 83-- we're at the point of the year at 83%. So we're tracking under-budget, on or under-budget, which is good for us. We're forecasting to be right on budget this year. So here's the monthly expenditures as we go through. There was nothing really that stuck out in these expenditures as we went through them, and they're pretty much what we expected. Based on this, it'll leave us about a $63 million balance at the end of April. We're already obviously forecasting May and June to do year-end closeout. Top 10 expenditures, much like the Police Department, there's-- the top four are salary-related. They're pretty much what we expected. We're a little lower in the salary in comparison with the previous year. That has a lot to do with the vacancies that we're carrying right now. As we move into the other charges, equipment management, deferred comp, industrial, much of those are, again, are pretty much what we expected for this time of the year. And then revenues. Revenues actually have come up this year. We are trending about $1.9 million more this year than we did in the previous year. A lot of that's due to our ambulance transports. When the changes in the access system happened, they also allowed us to start recognizing more folks that had insurance, as well as the percentages went up. So that's helped us a little bit there, about $1.9 million. And that's pretty much-- that's it for Fire.
Any questions? Thank you so much. All right, we have our courts with our new Presiding Judge.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Subcommittee, I'm very happy to be here today to talk about the Court's budget year-to-date. As you can see, at least through the end of April, we had spent $21.8 million. That's out of the yearly budget that we had for this year of about $27.5. And as we go to the next page, you can see that-- we look at the monthlies and we see the breakdown. As of the end of April, we were at 6.47% underspending what we spent last year. I was looking at our internal budget numbers just the day before yesterday that were through the end of April-- I'm sorry, through the end of May, which updates this a bit, and we're currently just a hair under about 5%. And I think, like Fire, much of that is attributable to the vacancies that we've been carrying, because as we go to the next page, again, the lion's share of the costs for the Court are our personnel costs. And so that is really what has driven the budget to be where it is this particular year. If we go to the next page on revenues, you can see that we have continued the trend that we have been talking about all throughout this year, in that our revenues are down globally there by almost 13%. And again, as we have tracked that against the total number of filings that come into the Court, we see a direct correlation there between the number of filings that come in as they've been reduced and the revenues that come in. One of the things that this has given us an opportunity today to do, and I think we spoke a little bit about this last time, is that we are planning to draw down strategically in a couple of areas, so that we're better positioned for some of what's changed around us.
Any questions? All righty, we have actually one card from the public. Mrs. Rogers, come on down.
Thank you, Chairman Noakowski and members of the Subcommittee. One of the things that I would like to have reported at the next Subcommittee meeting, which will be in September, I believe, is what revenue we've received to date from the '93 and the '07 ballot issues for public safety. We've never had a report on those, that I'm aware of publicly, and I think it's important that we know whether they have tracked as was projected and anticipated, or whether we're in balance with it or out of balance. What's the status of those two ballot proposals that were substantially and by plurality approved by all of us who voted in those elections? And also, I would like the council, as a body, to urge whoever we send to the League of Cities, that the League of Cities very, very strongly work toward getting PSRPS out of state management. They have failed, and there's no indication that they will do any better. This should be in the hands of a professional investment management company that has a track record of success. Stocks go up and down, that's a given. But when you have people running this who don't know what the devil they're doing because they have no experience in it, you have sealed your fate for failure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rogers. So maybe next time when we come back together as a Subcommittee, we can have as a future agenda item where all the proposition monies go to, and especially when it comes to public safety, right? The other thing too is that if we can look at-- I know yesterday during our interview process, one of the candidates talked about the uncollected fines that we have out there outstanding. Maybe you can give us an update on that also. And I know that goes back to the very beginning, so we need to educate people about that also.
Absolutely. Chairman Noakowski, we can put together something very specific that talks about that, breaks down what it is, and talks about what our approach has been and will be in the future with regard to those.
Perfect, thank you. Any other questions?
Following on that, is there some point where you just simply give up and you could write them off? I mean, that's a huge balance to continue if it's hopeless. Yeah.
Mr. Chair, Councilwoman Williams, that's a very good question. I wish we could do that. State law does not allow us to simply write it off, and part of the reason for that is realize that much of that debt that we're carrying is not money that would come to the general fund at the city level. It's state surcharges.
Right.
And so the state expects that money, and they have not given us permission to write that off. We do look-- a very astute comment was just made here that some of these people have died. That's absolutely true. If we're talking about debts that, for example, go back to 1989, much of which has been at the collection agency for then 20 years, it's a pretty good bet that that's not money that's going to be coming into the city anytime soon. Although, I will tell you that we do collect on very old debts through the private sector, through the collection agencies that we contract with, quite a bit. I mean, it's nothing compared to what we collect in the first two years, which is when the vast majority of what's imposed is fully paid off. But it still comes in, and that's one of the reasons that there has been a benefit to keeping them that long. We do research when we get an indication that there-- that a person has passed away. That's one opportunity we have, consistent with the law, to actually dispose of that. Short of that, it's very difficult for us.
Can you tell-- just estimate what percentage would actually be Phoenix's money?
Yes.
Since you said most of that state?
Approximately 45 cents on every dollar that is imposed in the city Court stays with the city.
It's still a healthy amount.
Almost half, yeah.
It is.
Thank you.
All righty, any other questions on the budget? All righty, with that, thank you very much. We're on future agenda items. Any future agenda items? Councilmember Williams?
Thank you. I would like to have a status report on the computer system that PD's been installing and upgrading and how it's all coming together, because it seems like this has been going on a very long time, and I haven't heard anything, and I don't think it's operable yet.
All right, I guess we could do that. Any other?
I would-- a few months ago, we spoke about some of the new efforts the department was making related to sex offenders and updating neighborhoods also of departures, and would love to get an update on how that is going.
I'm sorry, did you say departures?
People-- so we send you a letter when a sex offender arrives, and people assume they are still there, and so we were going to try to notify neighbors when they move, and some of the neighborhoods in District 8 have not yet perceived that change.
Councilmember Williams?
I've read, I think briefly, in the newspaper about PD had been-- can't say soliciting Johns, but had been doing some type of program against prostitution. Could we have an update on what they were doing and the results?
Yes, police has been working in concert with the overall effort on human trafficking, but there have been some sting operations and things going, so yes.
Thank you.
Any other future agenda items?
And then Ethics Reform in September as well.
All righty, if we can bring that back in September.
Yes, sir.
Any other future agenda items?
Well, I'd like to bring the whole-- I'd like to review the whole JSAB selection and really look at the process and making sure it's a fair and transparent process, and just to look at what kind of changes we can modify by the law, right?
Mr. Chairman, do you want that to be a discussion item among the members? Or are you wanting information? How would you want us to prepare for that?
Well, basically, I'd like to have some information on what we could actually do to modify--
Change the process.
To change the process, right?
Yes, sir.
We would-- well, I think where you're going is we would like-- we would like to know what our boundaries are, what-- we have the ability to look at at the JSAB process. How do we work collectively together in creating a new process? As mentioned, I believe, last night by one of the speakers, public comment was possibly putting a representative from each one of our districts. So looking at that--
What would that look like?
Other best practices that are out there too, and that we can actually discuss and have some kind of possible action on it.
All right. Any other future agenda items? All right, with that, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you so much.